Good evening. Thank you all very much for joining us. I'd like to officially call the meeting to order at 7:03 PM. With Graham, with the normal.
Okay, Nelson?
Present.
Briggs?
Here.
Blackman?
Here.
Paredes? Huckabee?
Here.
Ford?
Here, and we do have Ford. The first item on the agenda, audience comments. Camera. I think that. I'm sorry.
Camera, do you have audience comments?
We have one community member, Ms. Leah Bailey.
Good evening, Board of Directors. Support of Education, Dr. Smith. First of all, let me say, I hate to bother you with an issue that is trivial, because I know from experience that you have a lot of important business to take care of. This is an issue that I did try to resolve at the building level and wasn't able to resolve, so I'm bringing it to you. As you all are aware, there are students that attend HF in the morning for classes such as outdoor tutoring and management, and those students then travel to Parker starting with their second period. And I know you are also aware, there are days that HF does not meet, PLC days, all school testing days, and final exams. Historically, the students that attend HF in the morning are not required to come to Parker when HF doesn't meet. So if there's a PLC day, those students are allowed to stay at home, and then their parents bring them to Parker and sign them in, and they go about their day at Parker. This year, a policy or practice has instituted that those children are now being marked tardy if they don't come to Parker at 7:30. I have raised this issue with the front office staff as well as the administration. And I was told that because of state policy or record keeping that these students had to come at 7:30. What I'm asking the board to do is to let me know if that in fact is a policy or if that is a practice, what provision of state regulations is requiring this to happen, and if that is the case, why are we just doing it now when we haven't done it in the past? I can bring a number of parents up here that have had students that have attended HF in the morning and brought their students to class at 8:30. They were never marked tardy. They did not get a robo-call. They did not get an email. So this is something that is just happening this year. It's affecting these students' records because they're showing tardy after tardy after tardy, and I haven't been able to get a good answer as to why this is happening. So if someone would follow up on that and let me know, and someone tell me, give me an answer for me now, or...
Do you have a question?
Sure!
Because, no, I guess they're one of those, my son, I mean, I get so many calls about my kids being tardy, and it's not listening to them. Is, so maybe I'm not, maybe I'm missing something, but I mean, I probably get like eight calls a week, and I just don't care.
I care.
No, but so I, they're trying to understand, like, you said it affects their records, so...
So this is the thing, in years past, when HF had a PLC day?
Yes.
And the student came right to Parker at 8:30?
My kids have done that, so I understand.
Right. They were not marked tardy. They were just marked as present when they got there, as long as they got there before their second period class. What's happening this year is that these kids are being marked tardy unless they come to Parker at 7:30.
Right, so now I understand why I'm getting all these calls.
Yes, that's new. And when I ask about it, I'm told that it's, well, I'm told it's always done, except that's not the fact. I can bring ten parents who've had kids that did the same thing. They were never marked tardy, and I'm told it's because of some state regulation. So if that's the case, then for years, we've been in violation of a state regulation. But it doesn't make sense for these kids. These kids have to start school a week early. They have to come to school at Parker when HF doesn't have school. So the least we can do is allow them to have an extra hour of rest when they don't have to, when they don't go to HF. I'm also told that the reason this is happening is so that if you go to the media center to do their homework, number one, we don't need anyone to tell our children where to do their homework, and number two, if you got the grades or the ability to attend HF for math or Mandarin, I don't think you're the kind of kid that needs to come to Parker early to teach homework though. So I've already told the administration that next week HF has finals. They do not have first period, so my child will not be at Parker, and I do not expect to continue to get tardy calls and emails all next week. It doesn't make any sense, so.
So I'm not aware of the policy. I don't know if you heard Dr. Smith, but I'm sure you'll...
So I'll certainly follow up with you this week. The challenge of being able, not being able to verify what's happening in the past, right? There are issues, as I look at the whole process of sending kids to HF, that we need to review. Part of it is taking attendance, and there are gaps, I will tell you that there are gaps that exist in the process now, that based on your current comment, we have people I recommend. Or I should say, my recommendations necessarily around making sure that we know where our kids are. But let me, I took a little information. I'll follow up with you this week with information about the school, and if there is any information, text me, state staff, anything like that, okay?
Yeah, that's all I want to do.
Do you want to take?
I don't mind.
Sure, whichever is best.
It's m s c e t a two at yahoo dot com. And I'll tell you this, the way that they did it in the past is when the kids came to the building, the person at the front desk checked them in.
Sure.
It's been like that three years, so I'm not sure why we have to change it this year, but this doesn't exist. I don't care, I'm gonna make sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would have to acknowledge my own kids who have gone through this, really, 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 really look forward to those HF incident days.
Sure.
And then, I know this year, they're having all these tardy calls, really, it's lost of any, it's lost value of information, right? So I can call all the time.
Well, the problem is you're putting on these students' records, and when you get your postcard and it shows that you have all these tardies, if you're a student that's diligent about education, you don't want to see five tardies on your postcard if that matters to you. So we have to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, fourth grade, fourth grade class present their postcard exchange.
Good evening, Dr. Smith, Board of Education, most people's Board. I'd like to introduce Ms. Beatty and her fourth grade classroom community. Their little "hana," which means family, is here to present their postcard exchange. Thank you.
All right, Pop, thank you so much for your time today here. I have seven awesome Ohana members, so they're gonna come up. This is Ben Houston, Tamari Jackson, Leila Ross, go ahead and stand up over here, guys. David Ocasio, Emily Vercino, Ariana Salas, and Gavin Delica. Delica, I'm sorry. Come on down. So this postcard project is a, it really started with me sending out postcards. As soon as I got my class roster, I sent them all an aloha. I said, like, hi, welcome, my best family. And the response was so great. They were so excited. I started getting emails before school even started, and parents were talking about it. I was like, wow, this is really great. So then I was on Instagram, and there was this teacher out in California who started a postcard exchange. And I was like, wow, that sounds like a great project-based learning opportunity for social studies. So on a whim, I signed up one night, and then 560 classrooms all across the United States also signed up. So she created this Google Sheet, and we all put our names in there. There's actually a teacher at Flossmore Hills that saw me tweet it out, so then she signed up with her fifth grade. I think she's fifth grade.
Fourth, fourth grade.
Oh, she's fourth too? Well, see, that's my verse. And so it was crazy, because I didn't know she had signed up, and then here I am on this Google Doc from a teacher out in California, and then I saw SD 161 on it. And I was like, wow, that just shows you how the education community is all connected. That's really awesome. So now I will turn it over to Ben, and he'll kind of tell you how we got the ball rolling in the classroom.
Hi, my name is Benjamin Houston, and here is our class signup sheet over there, and we highlighted what states we have, and we didn't highlight the states that we haven't done so far. And how we, and we asked our parents if they could share with our family and friends our project too, and then hit Facebook, and we went viral. And when my mom put it on Facebook, we got a lot of people, we got 34 shares.
Yeah, I actually got the idea from Ben's mom, who put it on Facebook. I was like, oh, okay, I'll put it on Facebook too. And then I got like 34 shares, and a bunch of people started resharing and liking it, and then people, obviously, that's how it goes viral, right? People we didn't even know, they just started flying it, and we're like, oh my gosh.
And how we drafted our postcard was, we decided what picture to represent the Chicago and some fun facts to go with it, and each, and each student drafted some ideas on Google Docs, and then combined our ideas into a finished product. And we chose the cup with bears and cockerels and laptops, because they, because all those teams are in Chicago, and they all represent Chicago. And we chose the Serena Hills picture, because we go to school in Serena Hills. And we chose Navy Pier and Southern Bean in downtown, because they're all three famous landmarks from Chicago. And we chose the Ohana picture, because it represents our Ohana, and we put our hands around it, and we have a heart made out of sticks out of it.
And so then we thought, okay, what's the main idea we're trying to get across? What's the theme? We want everybody to know about our class in Chicago. And so we, everybody submitted their ideas on Google Classroom, and then we kind of took pieces from everybody's postcard and put them in one, and then printed them on list of friends.
Hi, my name is David, and we were tracking our letters off the map. Each student has his space they are, they were responsible for updating their address to each postcard's mail out. We learned all about abbreviation and the correct way to write an address. Here is our first one that we sent.
So we sent one, and then it hit Instagram, and she tagged us in it, and that was like crazy to see, like, they had already hit. And we sent them out, it was like a Thursday, and by Monday, some teacher had already posted us on Instagram. We had no idea how long this process would take, because most of us don't send mail anymore. So that was a real learning experience there, in abbreviation, so.
The postcard started, was starting, our first one, our first one from Route 66 reminded us of the movie Cars. We then exploded on Google Earth. We decided anytime we got a postcard, we would visit it on Google Earth to explore. Here's our first postcard that we got, from Route 66. Here's me and my friends, and we were placing our presents on at the bridge on Google Earth.
So that was fun, just to drop it and try to find where they're at on the postcard on Google Earth, and then explore the area a little bit, so.
Hi, I'm Gavin Delica, and I'm going to be telling you about Pages. On Pages, first, we went on, we have called Photo Booth and took a picture of ourselves. Then we went on Google or Safari, and we had took a picture from our state or our postcard, and we had put it on Pages. Then we took the photo of ourselves and put that on Pages as well, over the photo that we got from Google or Safari. And then what we did is we cut the background out to make it just our body, and then we were able to place it on our photo that we took, to make it look like we were really there, and here are some examples. Here we have Tamarian in Kentucky, on top of the Black Mountains. Here we have Ben on the Jumbo Trump at Times Square. We have Leila here in New Jersey. We have Kevin in Las Vegas, Nevada. Here I am at Holiday World, Black Hills Safari in Indiana. And then we have Leila at the Carnegie Museum of Natural History in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Then we have Michaela on top of a castle in Ireland, and we have Delia in Glaciers Natural Park.
And so I wish I had a picture of these guys doing it in the process of exploring this app, because it was, it was a process, and you didn't have a green screen at the time, but a green rug in my classroom. So here, we're like holding it up in the background, coaching and trying to like crop out their hands, and some of them were wearing green shirts, so it's like a floating head. So it was like a whole learning curve, exploring process, so it was really great. And they loved it, because it was like, they were there, so. Emily?
Hello, my name is Emily Vercino, and I'm going to be telling you about picollos. Picollos are the presentation to explain what they learn about state, city, region, and what famous landmarks were included on the postcard. We discussed the purpose of the postcard and why the state chooses certain landmarks to show. Then we researched what they learned. These are some examples from Anarute, Toto, and our Ohana.
So it was really like, okay, why are we, why do people make postcards? And then, what are these? Why are they choosing to put that on their postcard? Like, why, why would California choose this picture? And so without any information, they went and explored and did research. And the best part was that they were doing a research project, and they didn't realize they were doing a research project. So they're like, this is so fun! I'm like, you're learning!
And this picollos, this postcard was from New Hampshire, and this one was from Florida.
And that New Hampshire one was great, because I think we were studying rocks at the time, and they were like, oh my gosh, they have granite there. I know what kind of rock that is, and so it was neat to make connections with what they were learning.
Hi, my name is Ariana Salas. Students make videos to show what they learned and to use their voice. We learned about folklore, this is Jania, and she was making a video in the hallway. This is Gavin. He did his at home, and this is Alex, he can do it at home and at school.
So I'll just show you.
It's amazing. Not gonna be for me, but if, if Anna is okay in the US, it's a big, exciting state.
I don't know why it's in it. But just so you know, Gavin sold Indiana like it was their grand. I was like, I wanna go to Indiana. No one's said no one ever. And like, this kid like sold it. It was amazing. Um, this one, you know what's involved. You get the idea, it's all right. You wanna tell them what it is?
On the footprint, you can like, you can like it, like all of it, crush the mark it, rocket it, or drop it like that. And you can add your reply to it, too.
So then I post a reply, or other students...
Great, that's a good sound.
All right, well, you get the idea. But my kids post replies, because it'll ding at bedtime at night, and my daughter watches it, and then she posts a reply, like, wow, I had no idea. Or they'll make math videos, and then start replying right away to each other, and so it's really just me stepping out and them just taking over and running the show. Obviously, they really like using the drawings and the app part of it. You don't have to use that, but I like it too. That's fun. Oh, and then here's a rubric that we used then, and we modify it for whatever subject we're working on. So then they watch each other, they have an assigned person, and then they critique them. And then they're gonna create them.
Our name is Tamarian, and today I'll be telling you about Boo Boo Maydaw. We use Boo Boo Maydaw to Maydaw in California with one of our top postcards from Biden's Hannah. We learned that there are fires going on right now in California, that it had not rained there since Hannah moved there and then. Also that certain shops don't make wear shoes, and that California has great topless. We heard that there are seals on these, and she showed us a beautiful mist of oak tree. We also realized there was a time to change three hours early.
Uh, she's also mine, but she travels all over, and she's sending us postcards from all the places. So now it's like Hannah's famous in our classroom, so they were super excited to hang out with her. Leila?
Hey, my name is Leila Ross, and we are doing the, we, Ben, students got to groups and their generalizations. What they know is about the postcard received. Ireland, New Jersey is known for the Guardians' Day, that our nation's national parks are what most people visit states and the West Coast, that largely populated states send the most postcards, that our Ohana is very popular in the Midwest. We learned that where most of our friends and family are from, we've learned that many of these are called sea camps.
Yeah, that was new. A manatee was new to several of us. But then we also talked about the national parks, because it was in the news lately, and so we were talking about it on Flow Cab, about how, you know, they're starting to condense national parks, and then we kind of had a debate about it, and we're like, here's, all of our postcards are from national parks, why are people taking them away? And then we're like, talking about the pros and cons of that situation.
We went global. Other countries have been added to our board, China, three from Ireland, Netherlands, Ireland, Canada, and England.
Yeah, I have no idea how people in Ireland knew us. We didn't know any of them, but we got three from Ireland, from different people, and we're like, oh. They were super excited when we went global, so.
Coming soon. So we have just got spring, so we will be working to make videos with an app called Boo Boo. We are working to have a mystery Skype session with another class. We are also trying to find a way to connect with another classroom or group.
We found a classroom in Hawaii, but there's a huge time change, so we're trying to figure out the best ways to do that. So we won't have to hold up our rug anymore, we have a green screen, so we'll come back in the spring if you want.
Can you help us spread the word? We have shared it on Facebook and Twitter. We decided family members have been in biggest support. Here's what we still need, North Carolina, Delaware, Rhode Island, South Carolina, Vermont, Idaho, Wyoming, North Dakota, Nebraska, Alaska, Hawaii, Maine.
So if you know anybody, let us know. Standards, we did learn stuff, I just wanted to throw this in there at the end. We developed essential questions, we gathered information, we constructed, contrived arguments, blah, 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 good stuff. We learned, and it was amazing, and that's the point. They really learned how the world is connected and outside of their classroom, so.
You guys always come up and take pictures of us. You did an awesome, awesome, awesome job. Absolutely amazing. Can you guys come up?
Tamarian.
Come on here.
I love this vest, so I want to use it.
You know what, I love this vest, so I want to use it. Awesome. One, two, three. Okay, one more, Ohana. Ready? One, two, three. Ohana! Awesome. Thank you. Great job. Thank you. Dr. Smith, I'm not quite sure how you're going to top this with your superintendent report, but you can go right ahead and try.
I think the student presentation is scheduled for reports in the future. Certainly not as exciting, but I think that's a great example of types of activities to do for all our children, ones that are authentic, that are meaningful, that ultimately lead to a lot of engagement and a lot of authentic learning. So just a couple of things to touch on this week. I'll leave more words on this topic as we get a little bit closer to the end of the school year. But for now, I'm just saying we're ready to forget the arduous task of finding a replacement for Flossmore Hills principal, Ms. Pat McCraven. As you know, she will be retiring from Flossmore...
I'm almost gone.
Very important to us, yeah. But I agree, as you know, she'll be retiring from Flossmore Hills School at the end of this year, and our school community, our district, will be losing an incredible person and an educator, so we are very thankful to Ms. McCraven. But that's why it's so critical that we find an excellent new leader for the school, and that process will begin this Friday. Parents, teachers, administrators, and even board members have volunteered to participate in the process, and then, as I said, that will happen on Friday, December 15th. Round two will be held next week, and if everything goes well, we will have a hiring recommendation for the Board of Education in January. Switching topics just a little bit, Dr. Demetrovich has been working very hard over at Serena to develop the pilot for her STEAM lab, from reviewing materials to crafting and effective layout just above that library space. She's involved a number of knowledgeable people in the process. A group of us will be visiting Churchill School and Home of District 153 this week, as a matter of fact, to see their STEAM lab and actual. From there, we'll have another meeting with our vendor next week to review some flexible furniture and seating and an updated layout of our space. We have also involved men and associates, our architects, to review their work. We'll bring in information, we'll report to the board in January. And then, finally, a big congratulations goes out to the partner, the United States National Department of Education, for reaching the state tournament. Here on Facebook, I saw also a few pictures of their send-off, just a recap of what they've had this year. They won conference championship, regional championship, and the sectional championships. Unfortunately, this season ended at the tournament on Saturday, but we're so proud of them, and we will definitely bring them to a future board meeting to recognize their incredible accomplishments and their effort for this year.
Awesome. Thank you. Our sports teams at Parker have had a pretty amazing year, and halfway... Thank you very much. Okay. Next item on the agenda, consent agenda items, approval of consent agenda items listed below, minutes from November 13th, which there are some corrections that need to be made, so we will pull those. Executive session meeting minutes from November 13th as well, do those need to be pulled?
No.
Okay. So we are approving executive minutes, November 13th, levy hearings, special report education minutes from November 27th, as well as our approval of our personnel report. I need a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda items that are listed. So... Blackman, I need a second.
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm very sorry. That was Ms. Huckabee first, and Ms. Blackman second. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Okay. Blackman?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Ford? Yes, and the motion is passed. Next item on the agenda, the discussion, evidence-based school funding model with our state representative, Mr. Will Davis. Thank you very, very much for coming out. It was, it was snowing, snowing, raining, whatever it is that's going on outside, we appreciate you joining us tonight.
I will do my best to project, probably also my back, too. Thank you, Madam President, Dr. Smith, and the board. I am Will Davis, I'm state representative of the 30th District, where I have the pleasure of representing the community of Riverdale, Dalton, Harvey, Markham, Phoenix, Dixmoor, East, Hays, Prince, Hays, Prince, Homewood, Flossmore, of course, we both have chosen Robinson, Blue Island. I live in here in Homewood, here in the South Suburbs of... I'm a product of South Suburbs. I grew up in Harvey, in all local schools here, and the opportunity to go away to Southern Illinois University, Carver, now receiving a degree in political science and subsequently a master's in public administration from Governor State University. I have worked as the college admissions counselor, special assistant to the vice congressman Jesse Jackson Jr., and have been now elected as state representative of the 30th District for now 15 years. This past year in Springfield, a lot of ups and downs for lack of other equipment. But one of the things that we are really proud of is the fact that for the first time, should I say, first time in 20 years, we've had substantive change to the school funding formula that we have here in the state. The way I could characterize what we had before was that there were a series of calculations that determined that each district would get some money. And once that was determined, that money was given to the district. And at that point, it was time to get to your board and your community to determine how those dollars were spent without any real input, without any real communication back and forth between the United States Board of Education and for that matter, legislators. So to the extent in which your legislators came to your districts or visited, whatever the case may be. So over the last few years, it was interesting, well, there's always been interest in changing the school funding formula. I have served as the appropriations chairperson for K through 12 education for the last eight years. And there's always been an interest in changing the school funding formula, to try and make it more responsive to the needs of districts, to recognize that right now, every district is treated the same, or prior, every district was treated the same, but we realize that every district is different, and to create a formula that suggests to meet districts where their needs were and to try to put more money into the process than we've ever done before. That's always been the general criticism of the state of Illinois is that we don't fund schools. We are not the primary fund of schools, even though our constitution would suggest that that is indeed what we are supposed to be, which invokes a conversation about property taxes. I'm sure everybody in here is interested in that conversation. Maybe not. We like to tell stuff. Okay, but nevertheless, always a conversation about property taxes. And some of the challenges were because we weren't putting in, you know, the state wasn't putting in what it should be putting in. You all reached out to your local taxpayers to try to fill that void. Some districts were able to do it, some districts did it better than others, and some simply did not because of the tax bases they have in their communities. So there's always been an interest in a reformation of school funding that met, or at least worked to try to meet the need, that the state should be the primary fund of schools in the state of Illinois. In addition to that, and to this conversation, is the idea of accountability and transparency. As we worked through the ultimate change in the school funding formula, members said, well, what we've done before is that money would be given to the district and we really wouldn't know what happened to it, for lack of a better word for it. So therein lies the onset of the evidence-based funding model. So this overall conversation, I must attribute to Senator Andy Manor, who for a couple of years was out there beating the bricks, shaking bushes about changing the way that we fund schools in the state of Illinois. That was his desire, that was his interest. Now, one of the things Andy came from a school district in Southern Illinois. He lives in a town called Dunker Hill, probably not much bigger than this, I would imagine. But nevertheless, he saw what he thought was the inadequacy of school funding and said, you know, there's no reason why my young students in Southern Illinois should be treated a certain way because they're not inherent in the state when there's a lot of growth, a lot of development, and can benefit from that growth and development. So he set on the path to say, we need to really, really consider the way we change schools. Now, his initial, his initial forward into this, which was met with a lot of opposition, suggested that those districts that have should give to those districts better, more or less. Let's just shift the dollars around. Not necessarily talk about adding money, but let's just shift the dollars around that we have. So people said, okay, fine. But of course, those districts that had said, oh, thank you. Those districts that had said, well, you know, that doesn't work for us, which I can understand. So it really required us to dig deep into a way to try to have this conversation, although it was a tough conversation, but to suggest that we have to do a better job in the state. So the idea of bringing in evidence-based funding model suggests that let's look at research, let's look at best practices as a way to help figure out the avenues to get districts more money. That would include things like technology, more help in the classroom, instructional coaches, more counselors, more support staff, whatever that district needed. The idea was to try to figure out lanes to funnel money to those districts to help meet the needs that they specified. So the evidence-based funding model, it uses research, it uses best practices as a way to try to determine how districts should receive money. So the evidence-based funding model, in order for it to be successful, there was a need for more money. Okay, therein lies another conversation that we had in Springfield about how much more money should we be putting into schools? Now, of course, our constitution suggests that we should be the primary fund, which is 50.1% or 51%, whichever you like to use, but it suggests that we should be putting the majority of the money in. So in addition to a new way, the evidence-based funding model, there was a conversation about more money and how much, how much should that be? Now, we ranged anywhere from 3.5 anywhere to $6 billion almost. So it just depends. So where we landed was saying that initially, let's overall, in the next several years, try to put 3.5 billion more dollars into school funding here in the state of Illinois. And so over, right now, over a 10-year period, I would say 3.5 million, 350 million dollars, political science, I'm trying to think. 350 million more dollars every year into school funding to try to help districts into something that we call the adequacy target. So the adequacy target essentially says that this is the amount of money based on certain calculations that a district needs to adequately educate its students. That adequacy target, unlike before, where the adequacy target was 6119, to suggest that that was the amount of money needed to adequately educate students. Our version of the adequacy target varies from district to district. It takes into consideration of the wealth, you know, those resources, whatever the case may be, you come up with the adequacy target. The funding distribution suggests that the furthest you are away from your adequacy target, you are the district that you want to try to put money into first. So in other words, from furthest away all the way down. Now, let me also say that what maybe some didn't know about the way we used to fund schools is that every school district in the state of Illinois received money. So we often talk about the nutriors of the world, you know, the supposed richest school districts in the state, or even nutrier, got money from the state of Illinois. It was just by way of what we call flat. To say that because your EAP is over a certain level, there's no formula calculation. So we'll just say, give you $218 per student. And that was the amount of money that a flat grant district, those are the well-used school districts, would receive no matter what. And then there were other formula calculations for alternative grade schools, and then formula grade schools were the supposed poorest of the school districts. And they were the ones who would try to maximize up to the 6119, if you will, in terms of money. But the adequacy target suggests, again, that the furthest you are away from the funding formula suggests that the furthest you are away from the adequacy target, you would then be the first in line and then you would move down from there. Districts were put into tiers, four tiers. Tiers one, two, and three, well, one and two, received the bulk of the money. Tiers three and four, of course, have a very much smaller percentage of money that will ultimately, ultimately go to them. So depending on this calculation to determine your adequacy target, that would determine your place in line and ultimately where you would fall into the tiers. Now, again, mind you, this is the first time we've made substantive change to the school funding formula in the last 20 years. Now, does that just say that everybody's happy with what we did? I'm not necessarily even happy with what we did. And I only say that because there were a lot of moving pieces to this bill. Some of you have heard a little bit about the tuition tax grant for corporations and for donors to help provide a scholarship to students that attend private or early schools. That is built into this as well. So there are a lot of different pieces that exist with that, with this overall bill. But again, our effort is to take a step back and say, 20 years, we have not done what we're supposed to do. We have to work electrically to put in place a formula to try to move us in the right direction so that we are adequately and adequately funding all schools in the state of Illinois. So again, we know that this is just the beginning of the conversation because in addition to where we landed this year with 350 million dollars, it will require continued dialogue, continued advocacy to make sure that we are meeting that obligation year after year. Mind you, 350 million is the minimum amount of funding that we can put in. It will be up to us on the appropriations committee, based on what our overall allocation of dollars are, to determine whether or not 350 becomes just the floor or whether or not we can increase that from year to year to try to help move school districts closer to their adequacy targets. The faster we run the formula, the quicker districts move to their adequacy targets. And when they reach their adequacy target, again, they just, they fall off some speed. And then that becomes the base funding minimum that all districts will receive. So one of the things that we at least like to say in this form of the conversation is that our efforts were to make sure that no district lost money from the previous year. And I believe we have accomplished that. So no district loses money from the previous year based on this formula. And that was important to all of us. Generally, when we have this conversation, all the ultimate question that's asked is, did my district lose? If my district lost, then there's nobody I can support anything that you're doing. So we knew walking into this, we had to make sure that at the very least, the base funding minimum for every school district reflects the amount of money that they received the previous year, and then we would grow and build, and build again. So I'll just stop there. I'll just, I'll just stop there. Yeah, it's a lot, lot to take. And certainly in 15 or 20 minutes, if anybody would like to have some copies of a presentation I have for the State Board of Education, if you share your email address with me, I will forward you this presentation, which will probably confuse you more than anything. But at the very least, you'll have the same type of information that I have relative to how the school funding formula is designed, designed to work. And then we can answer any additional questions that you may have. So that being said, are there any questions from the board?
I do have a question, a couple of questions. Some of them you have answered. Now, there is rumor, and I'm not sure if this tuition tax grant that we're talking about here, that there was a rumor, or was rumor that there would be some type of bill that was supposed to be out there that would provide relief, tax relief for property owners. And I'm not sure if it got funded or if that was just rumor, but can you speak more about that?
Right. So of course, in the conversation about school funding formula, one of the challenges for residents, you will, was the idea of how do we kick our property tax relief? So again, going back and understanding, because the state was not still a judge responsibility, we as board members looked to your local taxpayers. And so in order to move this bill forward, we had to look at two different scenarios of school districts. If I could categorize it this way, we look at what we call high wealth, high tax districts, and what we classify as, well, we classify it as low wealth, low wealth, high tax districts. So districts that, you know, overall, well, necessarily have a ton of money, but their tax rates suggest that they are trying to pay a lot more for their residents than they could exactly for their residents. The, the low wealth, high tax provision of the bill, right, these were provisions put into the bill. Provision of the bill is an effort to try to provide more financial relief from the state for districts that are above a certain tax rate, above a certain tax rate. And to suggest that, so the catch to that is if a district falls into the category, and that is a confrontation by the State Board of Education, that if they worked to reduce their taxes, then we would backfill with money. So the concern was that the state would falter on, on its efforts. So in other words, if we say, you have to do it, and then we didn't provide the money, that would be, that would be the challenge. If we weren't providing the money. So it is something that we did have to fund. The funding for that provision starts in FY19, so it actually starts next year. That's when it kicks in. Now, again, based on tax rates, that is where the threshold would be. If I, if I, if I am understanding what I got from the State Board of Education, and you must have a tax rate in excess of 10.19 to qualify at this point. Now, does that mean every district that falls into that category will make the effort to try to lower their tax rates? We don't know. Again, our job was to try to provide a mechanism that suggests that if you lower your tax rates, then we would then provide cash because you lower your tax rate, we didn't want you to fall off the cliff with money. So that's why we suggested that we would then backfill with some money if you moved to lower your tax rate. So that's what if your residents demand. Now, again, it's something that will, because the challenge would be, some districts will say, you know what, yeah, we may get a little more money from the state, but we'd like the money that we're getting from our residents, and we'd like to keep them. And then that becomes a conversation that you must have with the voters to justify, if I can say it that way, keeping their tax dollars and then adding some more state money onto them. But property tax relief was an important part of it. The other end of the spectrum for high wealth, high tax districts, their triggers were more about referendum. And triggered by having a certain number of your voters vote in affirmative for that district to lower its taxes as well. But again, still suggesting that a district must vote with their voters to say, if we like the money that we're receiving from you, this is what we're doing with it, this is how we use it, and any concerns that may exist in your community is what you have to face in terms of making sure that they understand what they're doing. So all of these things, or these two provisions, were also a part of our efforts to create more transparency and accountability for the money that we receive. So the evidence-based funding model allows us to track specifically where the dollars go, with the, with the potential that the outcomes of the school district will be higher. So if we looked a year, two years down the road and saw that the outcomes had changed, then we at least know how we're giving money to the school district, and we can work with them to suggest, and I say we, the State Board of Education, will work with the district to maybe offer some suggestions about how we currently spend money and maybe offer some different direction on some of the things, hopefully in the effort to ultimately improve outcomes of that particular district. So those provisions for property tax relief, again, got to fall on the ends of the spectrum, but there are some provisions. I mentioned earlier that, A, we do have to fund it, and we will fund it for FY19. Secondly, again, not every school district may take advantage of it. So a school district that's right on the outside of that threshold, again, fewer schools that take advantage of it, there will be more schools to come in. So it really depends on what schools, and again, how they present themselves to their communities relative to whether or not that community demands the property tax relief or is willing to say, fine, you know, we like the quality of our schools, we like what we've been given, we'd like to continue to allow it to happen.
Follow-up questions? Anybody? Or, just on that. So the tax rate, the specific tax rates, the regulations surrounding this process are still being developed by ISPE, correct?
Yeah.
So the specifics aren't in the bill, we're waiting for ISPE to finalize regulations?
We're waiting on the State Board to finalize a few things, but it's that.
And then, do you have any districts in the state that have a tax rate of over 10?
I think there are some.
Small handful.
Yeah, I'm not a tiny, tiny, but there are some.
Do you know of any in Chicago?
Well, this provision was one of, one of the areas where this type of provision was directed was South Dakota and provisions out there as well to give them an opportunity to add tax rates.
So that's 10, tax rate of 10, that's you, right? Maybe a little higher? I'm just curious. If you don't know.
I don't know the names of the districts specifically, but this, this provision, or it's looking at districts out here in South Suburbs, and of course, South Dakota.
Is, I assume that ISPE has flexibility, depending on the funding and appropriation that come in, to adjust that threshold in two, three years?
Right. So as I'm reading the response, part of the response, it indicates that they will change each year, and it's right now hard to give which districts will be eligible and which will take advantage of the program to provide that relief. So it's evolved, I mean, it's really evolved.
Just to clarify, I want to just want to make sure that I understand, so with SE1, the, the.
Well, it's actually Senator 1947.
With that, so. With that, so, looking ahead, you're talking about within the next ten years, this will...
That was the path that we set on. But, again, as members talk about that time, to the extent in which they support what we're doing, it's all about how much we're willing to put forth. This goes into our proverbial conversation about prioritizing education. So if we prioritize it, and suggest that we need, we want those districts to get to those adequacy targets a lot quicker, then we have the ability to add more of this three hundred and fifty million dollars every year. In the budgetary conversation that we have, we have, we probably can relate, is what we call the above-line expenses and the below-line expenses. Our mandatory expenditures versus those of the annual discretionary. My goal is to make sure that even though this would otherwise be discretionary expense, as part of our appropriations committee and how we figure out how we're spending money, my goal is to push this a boat, and make advantages of it. So the statute doesn't necessarily say that, but considering all the time, ever, there are some blood's waiting tears to help us get to this point, I would like, moving forward, our members will want to make sure that we continue to make education a priority. So my goal is to try to make an advantage of this expense. So we always have a minimum spending budget, and if we never have one, over going to below three hundred and fifty, if anything we're talking about, we might need to add more money to that. And our hope is that as we work to deal with our pension obligations, we're paying down our backdoor bills, we're dealing with our home debt challenges, that ultimately we'll be free of more money. And then we have a conversation, don't have to spend money on that one. Presumably, this will be one of the areas that should benefit from increased investment.
On the tax rate we're talking about, we talked about tax rate as a proportion of EAD, or tax rate as a proportion of actual value?
Well, how about reading this word? So, in the initial, in initial calculations, districts need a threshold, a threshold unit equivalent tax rate, which is the operating tax rate times a unit equivalent tax rate multiplied in excess of ten point one nine percent to qualify in our simulation. Foss Moore's adjusted, and I've shared a question for him, so that's why I speak to him specifically, says Foss Moore's adjusted OTR, operating tax rate, times its unit equivalent tax rate multiplied, and there's some numbers in support of that, is approximately eight point seven two oh five three percent according to the State Board of Education. In the simulation, they would not qualify for the program, but they will change each year, and it's hard to predict which districts will be eligible, and which will take advantage of the program to provide, provide relief. So, that's how ISPE is determining and making these decisions. But again, if you need some more detail, we should figure out how to get you some detail.
Well, you know, my usual approach is just to wait for them writing, and then read it, but, it's just the lawyer in me, right? If you read stuff that legislators don't write, it changes a lot.
We wanted to provide some information based on the questions, and Dr. Smith is telling us how to provide, presumably, from all of you, so.
All right, sure.
But, I mean, for me, the great thing about even this, is that, again, it's, it's still kind of evolving, obviously. But this is our initial conversation. You know, we welcome the opportunity to come back, bring the State Board of Education if we need to, or whomever you, whoever you need to try to help digest this, you know, so that it has a level of understanding for you, we're willing, willing, welcome, welcome to do so. Or you really just need to do is just, just let us know.
So before you get to, I hear a couple of questions you sent at the time, but I'm also happy to open the floor to anyone in the audience, the staff, who might have a question, or comment, or concern, or if anyone has questions at all. Were there any additional questions that you wanted to address, as Dr. Smith sent to the question?
No, I think he does, he sent through questions. He was saying, you know, I have had through questions, which gives a link that shows kind of where the district stands overall, in terms of its base funding, a question about the tax relief provision, and it's a little technical, but that was the answer that they provided for me. And then as far as the last question about the future of funding, it's really just depending on the members to engage and advocate for more dollars. I mean, I would hate to think, and I'll just be honest with you, I would hate to think that we, that we went down this path, and, and talked about all these great things, only to let this die for next year. And that was why, that was one of the concerns with the property tax relief, is that, you know, we're talking about school to plan, we still have to fund that, and we still have to appropriate the dollars for it, as well, and of course, the concern was, is that, let's say you did that, you know, you know, your districts may not recover soon from rolling and asking for less money, which is why we had to have this pool of money, and suggest that if you do it, then we would then backfill with about the dollar, almost half the dollar, in terms of what you reduce by, as well. So that was our, to districts, if they were set to begin that process, and we will get
And that backfilling process, is that a one-time only?
There are, there are some provisions. So like, for instance, the drop-off can be too steep, and we can get the specifics of that, because we wanted to try to make sure we try to take care of as many districts as possible. So I don't think it's one-time only, but if the initial drop-off, there is a, a full about which you can come off, you know, if you must get opportunities to provide some additional resources.
And I just have one other question, so I'm just curious about the, the adequacy target in, in just the bill in general, because it assumes that resources are both the problem and the solution to improving education in the state of Illinois. So what will be, or is there a process that you created, or thinking about creating, that will look at this and tweak this every year? I mean, you talked, you talked about accountability, so you, you know, so, if two, three years from now, you don't start to see improvement, even though districts have been receiving more resources, what will the approach be that will take?
Well, two things that should allow us an examination, that of course is the evidence-based funding model, that suggests that here are the different ways in which you can receive dollars in this way. And then secondly, that we have to be concerned about is assessment, we have to see if we succeed in that. In fact, the State of Illinois now has an improved assessment, which is an additional layer of transparency relative to how dollars are being spent. But also built into the legislation is, I forgot what we call it, it's like a professional review, the lack of, so this group exists, who will be charged with examining, just like you mentioned, every year, this formula, looking at the different elements, the views as part of the evidence-based funding model, to see what these still best elements to view, as the research colleagues suggest that they're needing to adopt different elements, and others fall off. So, so there will be a ongoing effort to try to make sure that these are optimized, if I can say it that way, this opportunity to improve that group. Now, one of the things that I had to get for, is that if legislators are a part of the group, that we should be experts here. This is an expert panel, so let it be experts. I don't necessarily consider myself an expert, though I will have to respond based on what changes this suggests, but there are people who have degrees, and have studied these kinds of things, and that is their life's work. So it's a state in which they exist in the state of Illinois, and we'll give them the opportunity to all, to let them to come together, and, and add on, and, and debate these kinds of things, to help us make sure that we're putting our best foot forward every year relative to this one, and, and, and not knowing what the future of the state in that respect, another twenty years, maybe there's something else that comes along, and that might necessarily be for any of us to be able to, to say. But, you know, this group is designed to help continue to make sure that no more companies got some forward, regardless of this one, and make those necessary tweaks. It acts across the board, as either.
To the extent that the evidence-based funding model is using, say, ArcSpurs as the evidence?
What's what?
The ArcSpurs, right? I mean, I imagine that's going to be a primary component. Is there any plan, and I ask you this question, you've been a director of ISPE, do you plan to speed up the data, which this score's actually come out? Because I can't imagine, I mean, you'd be making funding decisions based on your old data, because they currently come out in October, which is not helpful.
Well, certainly something we should talk to the, to talk to the board about, but if, unless something is happening that I missed, I think we have one year left on the part, I think, one or two years left on the part, because it's a contract.
Is it official level beyond that now?
It's what?
Is it official level beyond that now?
Uh, not official, at some point there'll be another R and P, and those organizations or groups will be in on the R and P, so I think, I think it's one or two years we have left on the current contract up here, and then we'll see what happens after that, so we could have another assessment to broaden out, and what's upcoming in the future.
I do want to thank you for, I don't think everyone would, I understand it's been a rough few months, it's been a long, a long, a lot of work. A lot of hours, a lot of work, a little bit of risk, and taking, you know, time, so regardless of what our work perfectly, we all appreciate the time you've put.
Yes, I appreciate that. And this is a different set for us, considering where we've been, and where we're trying to go. And I hope that our residents in the state can, at the very least, acknowledge that we're trying to, trying to do it a little bit, and our, our last formula, if it, if it did one thing bad, it pit districts against each other, in terms of money. Because again, because we were talking about a pot of money, and a formula distribution, whenever we determine how much that pot would be, the question is, do I lose it directly or I say, and if you lost, you're automatically, or like, that would be appropriate, you're automatically done. So this is an effort, again, to try to make sure, A, that nobody believes this, which is different than where we've been before, but also hopefully the recognition that we're trying to, A, fulfill our responsibility as a state, to fund schools in the state of Illinois, but also in the interest of the idea of accountability and transparency, that we're putting forward the model, to open us the door for that to, to happen. And I hope that's something that we all can appreciate. I know there probably are some districts that don't like it, they prefer not to have anybody looking over their shoulder, or concerned about what you're doing, whatever the case may be, they feel this is my district, I know it's best for my district, and I understand that, you know, but there's a little something bigger going here in my mind, because we all have to be concerned about the education of our children. Because what doesn't happen in one district, while you think it's only in that community, it very easily spills into a community that you live in. And so it is a shared responsibility that we all have, relative to making sure that young people in the state of Illinois are properly educated. I represent thirty districts, fifteen communities that I mentioned earlier, but in this conversation, I am a state representative, and I don't have the luxury of just picking on my own issue, and making sure that just my issue is okay, if you will. It's a bigger responsibility that I have, or one that I'm certainly more than willing to take on, and again, I open myself up to questions, to criticism, thoughts, concerns, ideas, whatever it is, you know. If anybody has anything that they'd like to say, feel free to come sit down and talk. Be more than happy to sit and have this conversation.
Just one more quick question. Is this bill modeled after any other bills that you've seen across the country?
Well, one of the authors of the evidence-based model, that lady named Michelle, I mispronounced her name, she brought this to us, from a guy, I think it's Steven Pop, from the University of Michigan. So the evidence-based funding model is kind of his ultimate brand child, and it kind of just evolved from there. I have the pleasure of participating as an educational fellow for the National Conference of State Legislators. Matter of fact, and sorry, I did go to San Diego for my, I apologize for that. But where a lot of states are coming to happen is that I'm finding that what we attempted to do in the state of Illinois is gaining a little attention amongst some of the states. They come from these states from, you know, from Mississippi, East Coast, Utah, you know, different kinds of states, and they're really taking a look at what we're, and they may do it a little different based on the needs of their students, but where we are right now is we kind of made a leap from kind of the back of the pack, all the way toward the front of the pack, with what we're doing right here, so a lot of states are paying attention to this. And there have been some states that have tried similar versions of this before, this is our version, and we're going to do more versions in the future.
Well, thank you very much again for coming outside and talking about us, and talking about this issue, and I'm sure next year, as this goes out, we'll have more questions, so thank you for having an open door policy review.
Thank you. So one of the first things that you mentioned to me, you meant, was at the call, you would be there, I think, if you don't know, associations, our professional association, the state association, credit you, being integral to this process, and making sure that all of our kids have been represented at a high level, and so I'm going to myself and the board to thank you for all your work.
It was personal, my six-year-old will have an interest in technology, so it is personal. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Okay, next item on the agenda, policy review. Our policy review of our personnel and students' sexual harassment.
Sure, so we're bringing three policies, we're first reading tonight, five twenty, seven twenty, seven one eighty. Essentially, they address sexual harassment in the workplace, harassment, the general harassment of students, and then the prevention of, in our response to student harassment. We currently have policies in place to cover all of those areas, but we do have to respond to Public Act one hundred dash zero five five four, that came on November sixteenth. So there's a timeline we have to respond to in order to file a formal resolution, adopt movement, I will call re-adopting, all of these policies, and we'll bring that back in January. Any questions on the policies as they stick in? On the final product, or with all the footnotes, everything's going to be just here.
Homeward, home rule, intergovernmental agreement is the next item on the agenda.
Sure. So, what you have in your bag represents the final iteration of the home rule, intergovernmental agreement. Couple of things that I took away from our last conversation. For President Nelson, I asked him to look into legality of the agreements, and be able to verify that, yes, they are not legal. We tried, or I should say, we went back and forth on the language to make sure that it was appropriate for all the taxing bodies, certainly self-shouldered, to make sure that our interests were protected primarily. The chart, you have a sample kind of payout, so essentially, with, they're estimating with a quarter percent in sales tax. It could jump right up to a million dollars. The percentages that you see on page two of the report is where we landed after negotiating, and negotiating is a very loose term, because that's basically where we were at this start. We do have to take action no later than January twenty-second, board meeting, to approve the agreement, or not to approve the agreement, because on January twenty-third, the, and the board meeting in the village of Homewood, they will take a tally of who's decided to support the home rule process, and then those taxing bodies will be factored into the equation. Taxing bodies that decide not to support it will not be in the equation, and that money will be distributed to the other groups.
Okay, so January twenty-second is our last day, okay. Do we have questions, contributors, comments? Unfortunately, you know, it's just four of us tonight, because I think that, I think some of the members actually have questions.
Absolutely. I think we should roll back a minute.
Yep.
I have a couple of comments, some of these are missed, so we can take care of them, probably not have to go with, you're missing a period, they're missing a period, you're at one point three, again, page two.
You said one point three?
One point three, yeah. But, so there's a couple of issues. One question I'm sure there's an answer to, and I've forgotten, and I can probably just call them and ask, but I want to make sure, in case you come but I want to make sure, in case he comes up here. You know, Homewood is looking to propose a sales tax, and they're giving 100% of the sales tax to other taxing bodies, which, at least for a Homewood voter, I think is going to raise a question, why do we get the sales tax? And 70% under this agreement is going to go into District 153. That's largely going to be answered the question. I still have doubts about this. They're offering it to this, some portion of this district, because some of our students come from Homewood. It still bothers me that this board as a whole would be taking a position on the sales tax. It's going to affect, you know, yes, there are some home of residents in our district, but the vast majority of Homewood is not. We shouldn't, it bothers me that there would be essentially telling patients, view this. And I think, and we should probably, with a little board here, I think we should discuss whether we really need this money. And it's nice that someone's offering free revenue, but we seem to be doing okay. And, you know, it doesn't mean, I, what? So one question needs to be answered, is that why does Homewood want the home rule? Because it's not just for the sales tax, right? There's some other reason for it. I figured what they'll...
So I can share some additional information, some of their presentation, but really, it comes down to issues of code enforcement within Homewood. The ability to levy the sales tax, I would say, is probably a small part of it. But it really comes down to some of the more decisions that they like to make. At least that, the presentation.
Right, based on their presentation, that's certainly, you know, the message that we received.
So, yeah, I guess it seems to me that they might even be hurting themselves by proposing this, right? At least as applied to this district. We're not in dire need of revenue. I know John was agreeing to take it. We're taking it. So we'll assume he said that today, as he really will. But, you know, we, we're okay. It's going to be controversial, so that's, there are going to be people who hate the idea. And I think someone's going to say, why do you need this home rule thing to get all the money away? And so I would suggest if this board considered whether it's really supporting Homewood to agree to this, or whether to say, you know what, you guys want to do home rule, you guys, it seems to be a well-balanced decision. I mean, if our home of residents are going to pay for it, but I don't know that we need the revenue that you're offering us. I just don't know that we need it. One other nit in this agreement, paragraph 5.3. It says that the taxing districts, the five districts that are involved, so that's us, 153, 233, Hart District, Home and Library, shall meet every five years to review the home rule sales tax distribution form. So what percentage is each district is getting? And it says the village, Homewood, shall agree to implement any distribution formula modification approved by a majority of the governing bodies of other taxing, taxing, of the other taxing districts. So I have two issues. One is, it's slightly ambiguous, because majority of the governing bodies could be red. I don't think this is the intent, to mean like we added up the numbers of voting members of all bodies and somehow enjoy it in kind of that way. I don't like that ambiguity. But the other thing that seems a little weird about this is, unless I'm misreading this, this is saying that in five years from now, five taxing bodies would get together, three of them would get together and basically agree to take away the revenue for this too, which generally isn't the intent of the agreement. But imagine if like, we and 233 and say, the Hart District said, hey, let's take all of 153's money away. That's not the intent, so I don't, that should be fixed.
So originally, it was unanimous, right? And the reason we had to do a majority is because ultimately, there's no reason why Homewood ever want to look at the formula for getting 70%. That could turn into 2 billion dollars in 10 years. That's the end of the world. But you get my point. So part of the conversation behind that was, okay, well, we go five years, we go X number of years. Say that number's, now we're splitting 1.5 million, and we're agreeing 70% of this. But also, over those five to seven years, maybe some tips have rolled off, or property tax has rebounded, or things have shifted, and now the other bodies aren't doing as well. And so that would offer an opportunity to come together to review the allocations to determine if there's a more equitable way to distribute the money. You are 100% right. It is peculiar, the wording is peculiar. I think every lawyer from all of the taxing bodies has said, this seems weird, but this is the language where we come to argue. We have, again, is I'll gladly take those forward. We're just trying to make sure that there's an opportunity to review the allocations in the future without somebody being able to stop the processing of this.
My sense is, but as of right now, Homewood is really the only decision-making body in the distribution, right? Because they're essentially hanging off free money, with nothing in return from the other taxing body. And the only way to prevent someone from abusing this position is to make Homewood the sole arbiter in the future of how this is going to evolve. Does this provision could be used?
Could be.
That was my suggestion.
Well, I'll tell you, the libraries, and library specifically was concerned. The three school districts got together, decided, we want to push this out. Obviously, again, that's not the intent, that's not how we would work. There may be another way to word this that is more protective, and still offers an opportunity to go into the economy.
Yeah, I don't disagree with your point. I mean, I honestly, right now, don't know where I fall on this issue. I mean, but I think the question is, because you're right, the additional revenue is, it's marginal enough, right? And so we don't, there's not, we don't necessarily need it. So what would be the reason why, you know, if a lot of our committee members stopped us at last and said, you know, Mr. Nelson, can you please tell me why you are supporting Homewood going home? Like, so we need to have an answer, and we need to feel good about how we respond to that answer beyond, well, we give a cut of the revenue, because that's not an incentive for us. So we need to think about whether or not there's a larger incentive for us as to why we want to support our neighbor, Homewood.
I agree. If someone asked me today, I would say that they've made a great case for why they needed for enforcement and control of completion fire and things like that. But this, I would not bring this up as a reason why you should vote for Homewood.
Right. I mean, it's not, I mean, of course, getting additional revenue is always a great thing, but it's, given, you know, the amount that we're really talking about at the end of the day for 161, this is not the reason why we would support it. We need to think about what the reasons would be.
And frankly, our conversation is dominated by this formula and whatever looks like monetarily, because of our relation to Homewood. I would tell you that their discussions have been focused, like you said, on the police and fire issues, the code enforcement, the local decisions that they can make, and this is, this is aside conversation to those major points. So I think, and I think financially, 7.5% gets you to the point where it could be a teaching. You could start to talk about ways to adjust your levy moving forward, depending on what that number is. I think there are a couple of meaningful ways to use the dollars, but at the end of the day, it comes down to conscience and what we're looking to do moving forward, either together with Homewood 153% or not.
I mean, and the amount could increase, right? I mean, if this provision allows them to increase a quarter percent, they could actually vote, I think, every year to increase a quarter of a percent, right? And so, again, we need to have a really good answer as to why we would support Homewood being able to increase their sales tax every year at a quarter of a percent, if they so choose to do that.
So we'll bring this back on the night. Are there any specific, I kept the notes on 1.3, it's in the report. Any other specific questions you want me to dig into? Email or call, would you? Can you do this?
So the next item is special education update. I'm inclined to wait, because I know that other members would love to hear your presentation, Rob, and ask questions, and have it be, you know, a healthy, good conversation and discussion for you. So if we can hold that off until next month?
Absolutely.
That sounds like a long wait. Next item, item number seven, approval of district investment report. I need a motion, please, to approve the investment report from Bloom Township Treasurer, Dr. Rob Rosi, for the fiscal year 2017.
So move.
Nelson, I need a second. Blackman, roll call, please.
Okay.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Yes, the motion is passed. Next item, the record approval of the district audit. I need a motion to approve the financial audit for the year July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2017. Roll call, please. Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Court. Yes, the motion is passed. Next item, approval of copier contracts. I need a motion to approve the five-year lease and make its agreement with Proven Business Systems to replace eight aging Canon copiers for $5,689 per month.
So move.
Huckabee, second. Miss Blackman, roll call, please.
Okay, Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Court. Yes, the motion is passed. The next item we need to pull out is the second reading and approval of policy 7185. Is that correct?
Yep. The rest of the policies, I'm leaving them.
Next item on the agenda, the bills. Bills are submitted for approval for the board's ed each month. This month, Mr. Nelson has asked to review for the month of December and had the opportunity to review them prior to meeting.
I reviewed the bills with Ms. Lovella. I had some questions. She answered all my questions, and I would move to approve the bills.
I need a motion. Second. Your voices are now, maybe one is sitting right here. Okay, Mr. Nelson and Ms. Huckabee, roll call, please.
Okay, Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Court. Yes, the motion is passed. We have a motion to approve payroll in the amount of $1,558,958.48 for the month of November.
So, second.
Who are you going to say your name? Roll call, please.
Okay, Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Court. Yes, the motion is passed. Now move that we take a brief intermission. We want to call it that, to have executive session. There are no actions, so should...
Don't say there are no actions. Schedule a draft and close session.
Oh, that's right. So I need a motion, please, to move to executive session. Matters in personnel, five, ILPS, 120 slash two.
So move.
Need a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Okay, Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Court. Yes, the motion is passed. We are correct. There are no other action items.